Why don't you try, why don't you try leaving and coming back in?
I can't get out. I've tried that.
Why don't you just X out or X out of the meeting? I, I don't want to kick you out because then that means I can't let you back in. I'll send you a link again.
Wait, no, I'll, I'm all the way out now.
Okay.
Okay, I think, I think it's gonna be good now.
Okay, you can see the agenda?
No, I can't.
Can everybody else?
Not letting me back in.
I couldn't see the agenda.
Okay.
I can as well.
Elise, it says I'm waiting.
Okay. Um, my suggestion is to leave the meeting, come back out and I'll, I can send you the, the email link. So it's faster for you to come in.
Please, we'll just give Jerry here a minute here. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I just sent him the link again. So we'll see if he, did he leave? No.
His, his video's gone.
Okay. Not sure. It's strange. We could hear him and see him, so.
Jerry, I think we can still hear you. Can you hear us?
I can hear you, but I've got no, no, no video.
Yeah, we can't see you anymore.
And anything's, everything is all frozen up and I can't get, I can get back out to my email, but I can't do anything with it. So, everything is locked up.
Jerry, do you know how to hit Ctrl, Alt, Delete?
I'm on a, I'm on a, I'm on a, a Windows device.
Yep, see, if you're on Windows, you can hit Ctrl, Alt, Delete and-
I don't have, I, I'm on an iPad.
Okay, so that's, that's a little bit different. Um, you should be able to just leave meeting or close?
I don't get that dialog box.
You, you don't, Jerry, you don't get that in the bottom right corner of the screen?
Nope.
Jerry, this, Matt, I'm on an iPad. If you touch your screen, do you see a leave box in the upper left-hand corner if you just touch your screen up there?
Nope.
Sounds like your iPad might be frozen.
Yeah, I guess I'm gonna have to shut it off and come back.
Shut it all the way down, come back and then restart it.
What kind of a link did you send me, Elise?
I just sent you the regular Zoom link.
I know, I know.
Mike, what do you think? Should we get started?
Yes, came back in, do you mean, pretty sure.
Okay.
So, let me just rename him because he always comes in as a number.
Thanks, Elise, I'm on.
All right, looks, looks good, Jerry. Your screen working?
Everything's working.
Okay, great.
Except me, I'm just sitting here.
All right, so now we, I think we got everybody. We will get started. Okay. So, uh, today is Monday, January 11th. It is 5:04 PM. Um, I will call the meeting to order and ask for roll call, please. Oh Peggy, we can't hear you. I can see you talking, but I can't hear you. Still can't hear you.
Hello?
Oh, now we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that.
All right.
Randy Glish.
Randy Glish is here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Jacobson.
Is Anna here?
I saw her.
Yeah, give me that.
There she is.
Sorry.
Peterson.
Here.
Stitch.
Luke is here.
Balig.
Balig is here.
And Horton.
Here.
Isn't technology fun, everyone? All right, so next we have community input. So this part of the agenda allows for folks, um, who aren't on the agenda to bring things to our attention or to have a conversation with us. We are, we're not allowed, under public meeting laws, we're not allowed to ask many questions or, or make any decisions, but we can always put things on a future agenda. And I know that we have a, um, couple of folks who would like to speak tonight. Who would like to speak first? You can just, uh, say hello and I'll recognize you.
Hi, this is Mary Lacuna.
Oh, hi, Mary. All right, so, um, if you want to just, um, introduce yourself and give us your address and the floor is yours.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Jeanne. Uh, I apologize for my, my scenery. Um, I'm in the car, uh, because that's the way tonight works. Um, but I appreciate everybody's time and allowing me to, to talk to the village board. I live at 624 Sumac Street. Um, and I'm here tonight because there is a crowded field in my Oregon School Board race for Area 1, Seat 1. Um, and here's why I think I'm the best candidate and I'm actively seeking your vote, uh, in the February 16th primary. Uh, I'm a long time member and taxpayer of the Oregon School District. My husband Drew and I have lived in the community for 24 years. Our daughter Tori is an OHS sophomore, um, and our son Ben is recent graduate and currently is an avid program instructor at the high school. We're also long-term members of the Holy Mother of Constellation Church. Um, and I've been an active participant in our schools for many years. Uh, my current and past roles have included in-class volunteering, uh, PTO art fair and science fair organizer, uh, volunteer teacher for Caesar's English, Career Day participant, RCI Site Council member, and I've been actively engaged in a number of extracurricular activities, including music, sports, and dance. I fully understand the roles and responsibilities of the school board and the many issues before our district. I'm not a one-issue candidate and I invested in the priorities of student-centered learning, supporting a high-quality teaching staff, equity and inclusion, managing the COVID pandemic's impact on education, um, and financial stewardship. Uh, school board members need to take into account all the stakeholders and be visionary and strategic in the operation and oversight of the district. I'm a strong supporter of public education and know the important role that our teachers play in student success. Today's students are tomorrow's community, um, and there's no more important role that we have than meeting their unique learning and social, social, emotional needs. Um, our success in doing so is directly related to the quality of our educators and staff and the support that's provided to them. I have the skills and experience necessary to be an experience, uh, an effective school board member. Throughout my professional career and community involvement, I've cultivated the ability to listen and learn, collaborate, assess issues, and be a critical thinker, problem solve and communicate effectively. And I thank you for voting for me for school board on Tuesday, February 16th.
Thank you very much, Mary. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks for taking the time to, to address the board. All right, um, who else? Was there, was there someone else that wanted to talk tonight? Just wave your hand or speak up. I don't see anybody. All right. Okay, well, if anyone joins us, we can always go back. Um, so then we'll go on to item four, which is a joint meeting with a library board. So, uh, library board, would you like to call yourselves to order, please?
Yep, it's 5:09. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Kyle Severson.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Bergstrom.
Here.
Goplin.
Here.
Shada.
Here.
Sentui Shuda.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so item seven is update regarding the, the new bright, new library building. Um, we have a few things on here. First, we have a review of the memorandum of understanding and an update regarding, um, fundraising. Uh, Mike, did you want to talk about the MOU or should we just let Jennifer handle both these items?
I was gonna have Jennifer handle A and D.
Yeah, all right, Jennifer, go for it.
Thank you, Jeanne. Um, so the MOU is something most of you have seen at least once before. Um, this was a agreement that the library board and village board were working together on along with Matt, uh, when I started in July of 2018. Um, and was a very collaborative document, just trying to outline the process for building a new library, um, what the process would be and the steps involved. Um, Elise, if you go to page three, um, of the document, just want to highlight where we are. So we are somewhere between step four and step five. Um, the library has completed steps one, two, three, and, um, is working on wrapping up step four, um, on this page. Um, and so it kind of outlines just that process that we'll go through. Um, if anybody has any specific questions about this, um, I'll do my best to try to address it or Mike or Matt can chime in. Um, but otherwise I'll move on to the campaign update. Okay, I'm not hearing any questions, um, but if something comes up, feel free to mention that. Um, I'm gonna move on to letting you know where our campaign has been, um, in terms of dollar amounts. Um, we had originally started the campaign and planned it to go through June of 2020. That has changed, that timeline changed quite a bit because of the onset of COVID and the pandemic, um, and the impact on, um, our timeline because of that. So we did extend the campaign through the end of December 2020, um, and then planned to have this meeting with you to kind of update you on where things stood. Um, so I really appreciate the opportunity to report back. Um, also want to say thank you for all of your support and involvement in the project. I think people have served and volunteered and supported our efforts in a, a lot of different capacities from serving on our fundraising committee or our building committee, um, to showing up at our, our fundraising events. And I really appreciate all of your involvement throughout the process. As of Friday, the total that we had donated was $2,029,527.58. Um, and every penny counts, so I always like to include every last penny when I, when I share that total. Um, we've almost $12,000 in donations since Thursday, um, so that total now is about $12,000 higher than it was when I sent this to Mike. At present, we, um, have received, um, gifts from 788 different donors. Um, so a donor might be a family, an individual, a business, an organization, uh, one of the neighboring municipalities, um, or a foundation. Um, so I just want to say thank you to all of the, all of those people and groups that have stepped forward to donate and support our efforts to make a new library possible. Um, we really appreciate all the support we've gotten throughout the community. It's been amazing to see everybody do what they can. Uh, the other pieces that go into, uh, the funds that we have available are the library impact fees. So at the top of your screen, Elise, can you walk just a tiny bit more? There you go. The impact fees, um, that have been collected for the library, uh, that can be used for capital expenditures are just over 33, I'm sorry, $330,000. Um, and so if you combine, uh, the village commitment of 6 million, the campaign funds raised and the impact fees, it would put us at available funds of just over 8,361,000, um, which actually as of today is at about 8,373,000. So it's gone up again, like I said, about $12,000 since last week, um, and hopefully counting. So, um, just really appreciative of, um, all the different ways people have contributed. We've had in-kind donations as well, lots of participation. Um, but I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Jenny Nelson. She was, uh, the co-chair of the campaign along with Randy Glish and they've put in lots of hours, um, themselves to help make this project possible. So I'm gonna let Jenny talk about some of the efforts that we, um, have kind of, uh, put forth in activities to try to, try to raise these funds. Jenny, can I turn it over to you?
Yeah, thank you. So I usually like to like off-the-cuff talk, but I decided to like write down what I wanted to say, so hopefully it doesn't sound too harshed. But, um, I just wanted to take a few moments to celebrate a great accomplishment in the Village of Oregon. Um, my understanding is that we've raised the most money for any single public project in the history of the village, all during a global pandemic. So to me, that's a testament to the generosity of our compute, community and the desire to build a new library. Um, and I wanted to highlight a few things from that fundraising effort. Um, we had many local businesses contribute. The Firefly kicked off the effort in a, with an event in February, then Ziggy's hosted a drive-through Brat Fest in July, where we had Panagold and Froyo make contributions so that everything that we sold was a straight, um, street donation. So, and then we even had cookies from Fazdell's Bakery in Stoughton, so we have other communities even helping us out for an event we had in October. Um, we had local artists make donations as well as local businesses provide items for a silent auction and support the campaign in many ways. Orange Whip Design created our campaign marketing materials, so we didn't have to pay for anything that anybody saw. And a lot of printing was donated by Sprint Print. Um, and we had many, many businesses contribute financially, um, from OCB to Omni, just a few local in the community. Um, the other thing, we had so many community volunteers, volunteer, members volunteer for the campaign. We had 43 members of, on either the steering committee or the campaign cabinet, and we had an additional 75 people donate their time for the volunteering for the events. So over 100, 100 people volunteering. I can't, I can't, and then I can't believe that a group of this, um, these people would have ever imagined how creative they'd have to be to come up with safe events that could be held during a pandemic. We hosted a different event from July to December, all meeting social distance guidelines. We managed to serve 319 vehicles, brats, and froyo in 90-degree heat in July, where we raised $81,000 in one day. And then we raised over $700 in December on, in two hours by hosting outdoor hot cocoa and cookie stands in 25-degree weather. So we've kind of seen it all. And a dedicated group of people had a virtual gala and silent auction that we believe we had over 100 people watch and raised $11,000. Besides the many personal letters written and phone calls made by the team, a community and school-wide district mailing campaign was done. This mailing not only raised awareness about the project, but $53,000 in contributions can be directly attributed to the mailing. And even though our formal fundraising campaign is complete, we'll be continuing to take donations on the library website via mail and at the library. We'll also be completing some events that were being planned before the end of December. So if you're into crafts, we're currently taking orders for Valentine's craft kits that a community member is volunteering to organize. So you can preorder and pick up and do anything from a wreath to a little bean event. It's really cool. So go to the Facebook page for the library and you can check that out. And I would like to once again express my sincere gratitude for the amount of work done and the dedication shown by all the volunteers, my co-chair Randy Glish, who's an amazing fundraiser, and the library staff that helped work on the campaign. I know we didn't hit the $4 million goal, but I think we did an amazing job given the crazy turn everything took in March. We're here tonight to celebrate what we've achieved and to say we look forward to working with the village trustees on what the next step will be on the much-needed new library. So, thank you, guys.
That was very well said. Thank you, Jenny. Jennifer, do you have, do you have more additional?
I just want to recognize two other organizations that really partnered with us and helped us in a lot of ways. Uh, the Friends of the Oregon Public Library and then also the Oregon Community Resource Network. Um, both groups have been just amazing in supporting our efforts in a variety of ways, um, helping us take stock donations, for example, is one of the, the abilities that they've, um, added to the campaign. Um, grant eligibility that we wouldn't otherwise have gotten on our own. So they also have been amazing helpers for us as well. Mary, do you have anything to add?
I just, uh, want to sort of echo what Jenny said. During a pandemic, to raise over $2 million is just, I think, phenomenal. And all the, all the help, support we got from the community, um, is is terrific. I mean, just can't, i- i- it's, it's astounding, I think, to over $2 million.
I think that's all we have to report, but we're happy to take any questions, um, that anybody may have. Also want to point out that we do hope to be able to accept in-kind contributions as the project moves forward. Um, we've talked to at least two, uh, groups that are interested in the possibility of in-kind contributions to our bid process. Um, we are, as you see in MOU, we are required to publicly bid our project, but we have at least two businesses that have expressed, um, contribution of either, um, of products or services at a significantly discounted rate that they'll, um, submit as part of the bid process, um, when we get to that point.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that report. Village Board members, any questions for our library director or chairs of the fundraising campaign? Yes, Jenna?
I just wanted to say thank you all for your hard work. I think raising over $2 million is amazing, just absolutely amazing, so.
Thank you. All right, I will, I will keep going. Um, then item C, so I will preface this, this, uh, item, this board item, um, by saying that I asked for this to be on the agenda. So you're gonna know exactly where I stand. Mike helped me write this. Um, so I'll read this and then I'll explain a little bit and then I'm gonna make a motion and I would really hope that someone could second it for us to discuss. So item 7C is a village board discussion on possible action regarding requesting Aylers, who is our financial advisor, for those watching, to calculate impacts on the village's future tax levy and capital improvement plan if the village board increases its current borrowing of $6 million by one of the following amounts for the new library building, which would allow the project to break ground in 2021. And so those amounts that we would ask Aylers to, um, analyze for us is if we borrowed 7.5 million or 8 million or 9 million or 10 million. And so I preface this with saying, um, that we have, we've had 788 donors to the campaign. They've given over $2 million. We've had many, many businesses step up, more than 100 volunteers. In my opinion, we are at the, at the, uh, end of the community well. And, uh, I want to see this library be built and I would like to see it break around in 2021. So that's why this, um, proposed motion is on the agenda to ask our financial advisor how much it would cost. So I'm gonna make that motion that we ask Aylers to calculate the impacts for those amounts. Would anyone care to second? All right, so I have a second, Mike, Mike. Okay, so now that's on the table, now let's, let's discuss. I'm expecting some discussion on this item. Um, hopefully you've had a chance to think about it and just, uh, sure, share your thoughts. You, you all know where I stand. So I'll recognize you if anyone wants to, to speak at this time. Uh, yes, go ahead, Jerry.
Yes, thank you. Um, this is just a, a clerk clarification. I think I already know the answer to this, but what you're asking to do here is, uh, when you say $8 million, you're asking to have them study a total of $8 million bond issue, right?
Correct.
And we've already done six, right?
Well, we haven't borrowed any money, but, uh, we had, we've previously approved borrowing six.
Okay, all right. Okay, and when will they come back with this report? Any idea?
Um, so, uh, Mike has, um, a tentative next joint meeting with the library board on February 22nd. So we thought we better give Aylers about a month to, to do that.
Okay, and I guess when it comes back, I mean, I don't have any problem having Aylers, uh, study this a little bit. But when, when they bring it back, I'd like to know or have staff tell us what that's gonna do to our capital plan. If it's gonna delay any of the other projects we have. Uh, I know the senior center desperately needs to be rebuilt, or we need a new senior center to put it behind. And, uh, also village halls in San repair. So I, I understand where everybody is going with this. And again, I don't have a problem. We need a new library. There's no doubt about that. But I don't want to jeopardize any other projects by doing this.
Yeah, thanks, Jerry. Yeah, I, I agree. I'm, I'm interested to see how that report comes back from Aylers. Other, other board members, any thoughts? Yes, Corey, go ahead.
Uh, do we have any kind of more refined construction cost estimate, you know? Like Jerry mentioned, there's a lot of village needs right now and, you know, I guess I would be looking to, you know, evaluate what we think we're going to need for the library, um, but not really expanding the library's scope, um, just because we have so many other buildings that we're looking at. So do we have an updated cost, um, idea for the library, um, of how much additional we'll require?
Jennifer, do you want to answer that? Do you want me to?
Um, I'll start and then maybe you can elaborate, Jenny. Um, I sent Mike the, um, the last cost estimate we had provided by an architect was done, uh, last August and was presented to the board at that time. I did send that to Mike last week, so if you'd like, we can make sure that he shares that with you at a future meeting. Um, cost estimates for the project at the same scope that we presented last August are just over $10 million, with some inflation costs calculated into that document that, um, was shared at that time. That there, there's scenarios on that estimate for different, um, investment levels, low, medium, and high, and that's based on the low investment. So things like, um, automated materials handling systems and some bells and whistles that might be desirable are not included in that cost estimate. Um, Jenny, do you want to elaborate on that budget question that Corey asked?
Yeah, and the other thing that it, you know, it doesn't necessarily include any of the environmental things that people have requested, things like that. And the other big thing is we can't really design the building for the MOU until we have the money in hand that we think it might cost. So it's hard to give refined cost estimates additional information with pretty much having a conceptual drawing. So pretty much the budget that we have in August is what we have to go off of until we actually have the money, at least the $10 million to get started with the design and be able to have actual construction costs.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Amanda, you can go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I, I'm just, so just to clarify, the, um, roughly $10 million budget, uh, is, I don't want to say the bare minimum, but it's a nice library, but it doesn't include like green initiatives and that sort of thing. We'd, we'd need more than 10 million for that? Is that what I'm understanding?
I would say that's fair. Um, we, we certainly, when we are able to reengage in architect, one of the first things we would want to do is get updated cost estimates. I know that's a little bit difficult with COVID, um, kind of impacting how things are, um, in terms of the construction market. But that would be a high priority to reevaluate as soon as we, um, begin the architectural services. By design, we pause those services for the construction or for the capital campaign. We didn't want to spend any money designing a library that we wouldn't be building or having to re, redo it based on the final budget. And so that's, again, part of the reason why we don't have that information at this point.
Sure. Okay.
Mike, do you have anything to add about that?
I, I think, for example, you know, we don't, you know, people have talked about doing geothermal. I know that's not in, that, that was not in the, the August cost estimates. And so I think it's, I think the board members are making a good point that we have talked about trying to make the building very environmentally, uh, friendly. And so we'll have to talk about that as we, we, we go forward with the project. Absolutely, yep.
Thank you. Good questions. Uh, yes, go ahead, Jerry.
Yes, I just want to bring up the point that we've got kind of invisible player, uh, in this project, and that's the pandemic. Um, we've just started the year, so we don't know what that pandemic is gonna do to village revenues going forward. And, uh, I will, you know, I, again, I want to see what Aylers is gonna come back with, but- But I, I, boy, I don't know that we're going to get it done, Jeannie, before you leave. You know, it, it. I, I, I'm hesitant to commit to borrowing more money until, again, I know what it's going to do to our capital plan, what it's going to do to our revenues this year and our revenues going forward. And I guess, you know, I'll leave it with that comment. I, again, I'm, I'm all in favor of the new library. Don't get me wrong. But it's just that there are some pretty big question marks hanging out there.
Yeah. So, so Jerry, so just to answer your question, my motion is Ayler's is going to specifically calculate the impact on the village's future tax levy and the capital improvement plan. I have the same questions that you do. So that's why it's worded, that's why it's worded like that, because I want, I want them to know exactly what we need to know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Other board members, any comments? All right. Pending no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of my motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. So we will have another joint meeting with the library board on February 22nd. Sorry, library board, you're going to have to come back again. And probably listen to us have another discussion and go through this again. But I, I think this is, everyone knows that we're spending taxpayer dollars and we have to do it wisely. And nothing is ever quick in the bureaucratic system of municipalities. So I appreciate your patience. And then, yeah, and I, I also just want to say I, I've, along with Randy on the board, I've been part of the library steering committee for the fundraising committee and I've watched people work really, really hard. And it's not, it's not just giving money. It's, it's unloading boxes in 90 degree heat. It's, I've never seen some of us or you sweat so much. So we have, definitely have some sweat equity in all this too. And things get a little bit personal when, when you've worked so hard on someone for a couple of years. So thank you, library board. Thank you to the committee members. And a huge thank you to Jennifer Way, our fearless leader in this endeavor. Just done an outstanding job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeannie. And we appreciate the opportunity and we'll make sure that, that budget that was presented last August is in the next joint meeting packets. Everybody has that information in front of them as well.
Excellent. All right. I'm going to, I can't see the whole screen. Any, any further comments before I call for the library board to adjourn? I don't want to cut anybody off. I'm scrolling, scrolling. Don't see anyone waving. Okay, library board, would you like to ask for motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn, please. I moved. There is a second.
I'll second. This is Coral.
And again, we just want to thank everybody in the library or on the village board for working with us and being great partners. I mean, you're all in our committees and you're helping us a lot. So we really, again, want to thank everybody for being partners in this and look forward to our next meeting. Can I have them, all in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to public appearances. So item 9A, this is a discussion with Judge Beth Cox, Cynthia Di Camilli and Amy Miller regarding the award of federal grant. This is the drug-free community support grant. And we'll be talking about the notice of award, the project narrative and nine-month budget narrative and possible action regarding agreements with the school district and consultant. So I'll turn this over to Beth, Cynthia and Amy.
Thank you, Jeannie and the board. Let me just introduce this and, and say we're really glad to be here and give the board good news. About a year ago, I was in front of the board asking for a relatively small amount of funds to retain Cynthia Di Camilli on the municipal court staff when she retired from the school board and they eliminated the position. The board was generous enough to give the court those funds. And as a direct result of Cynthia and Amy Miller's efforts, we're all pleased to let the village know that the village is going to be the recipient over, and Cynthia has the details of this, and I'm in a vehicle and don't have my notes, of up to $500,000 of federal funds over four years, I believe, that will be directly used to provide services to youth and others to avoid and deal with the problems of substance abuse. So your efforts and investments have multiple paybacks to the village. And I appreciate the chance that you gave the court to even apply for that. My role in this was to support. And that was done. And I'm going to turn this over to the people who carry the burden of getting this written, getting it submitted and fighting their nails over the actual grant award. So Cynthia and Amy, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I just want to give you a very, very quick overview of drug-free communities grants. You have a one-page sort of summary of drug-free communities grants are all about finding local solutions to local problems. There's, it's not about finding, you know, taking some cookie cutter and, and saying, this is how we have to be. The, the, the general way this works is first of all, to get the community engaged. And you can see in that graphic in the, on the right-hand side that says drug-free communities over it, of all of the different segments of the community that we are asked to make sure are involved in this, in this grant. And beyond that, we, there, we know that there are segments that are not mentioned on there. And because this grant covers all of the Oregon school district, we need to also engage people in Fitchburg. We need to engage people in Brooklyn. We need to engage people out in the township. So this is, this is all about, our first goal in this grant, and if you have a copy of the budget narrative, you'll, or the, the project narrative, you'll see that's our first goal, is all about collaboration. The second piece of this is about preventing substance abuse among kids. And we specifically are targeting alcohol and tobacco, which in our case is nicotine. Those, those are the two substances that really pop when we look at things that are happening in our community. And we have spent a lot of time gathering data and thinking about that. So that's why we do it. I, we are not here to make this a dry town. We are not here to prevent adults from using any legal substances. We just want to make sure that our kids are healthy and our kids are safe. So that's, that's what this about, is about. The, the beauty of this grant, it's a five-year grant. It is $125,000 a year for, for each of those five years. And this grant provides money for professional staffing, but also for professional training. There is a, a lot of opportunity for many people in this community to be trained in prevention methods. So five years from now, eight years from now, as we, as we are looking at the end of this grant, we have built a sustainable and, and well-educated infrastructure in our community to continue the, the work of substance use prevention. Amy, what have I forgotten?
The only thing I would add would be a clear understanding that the work is not for our youth. The work will be done with our youth. And that is one of our big tasks is to bring youth into the conversation as a equal to all of us, so that we're learning from them. They're helping us design messaging, deliver messaging.
We would love to have someone from village government in, engaged because that's part of what we're going to be doing. So we would, if there is one thing you could do for us, it would be having one of you become a regular member of our meetings when we're meeting. It, it's wonderful if someone here has a passion about this or just really cares deeply about children. We would love to have one of you, don't need the whole gang, just somebody who is willing to be that liaison between us and the village board. We, we were, we would also like to say, we are willing to come back to you as often as you would like to hear from us. And we don't know how often that is. And we may be back more often than you want to see us because we may have things that we want to talk to you about.
Excellent. Yes, it's such great news and good reports. Thank you, ladies. I see Amanda has a question. Go for it, Amanda.
Actually, it wasn't a question. I don't know if, I was going to wait and see if anybody else volunteered, but I'd be on the shortlist maybe if you're willing.
Well, Amanda, I think we're already on my email list through another organization in the community. So we would love to have you joining us because we get a double hit that way. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Amanda, for stepping up. Appreciate that. Question, questions or comments regarding this item? This is just amazing news for our community and we appreciate. I know it takes a lot of work and a lot of time to write grant requests, so we acknowledge that as well.
We will be coming back to you with an MOU possibly. We have a consultant that is written into the grant. We are working out the, the details of the MOU with that consultant. She is the one who helps us set up our, our audits and our, all of the things that we have to do so that we're compliant with the grant. We will, we'll come back to you with the MOU and when we have that note a submittable form. How's that?
And she brings us expertise in evaluation, which will really help us in terms of the goal of this five-year grant is to be sustainable. So we can implement programs, but how do we keep this going over time? And she brings a national level of expertise to us, which we really appreciate.
Excellent. Yeah, go ahead, Randy.
Oh, Jeannie, I just want to give congratulations to Judge Cox, Cynthia and Amy. Having written lots of grants myself, there, sometimes they're, they're not as easy as people think they are to get. So congratulations to you. This is a a, a great success. And I'm sure lots of good things will happen over the next five years.
Thank you. Thank you. I should say, this was our first attempt at writing this grant. We actually, I shouldn't say that. It was our second attempt at writing the grant, but the first time we actually submitted it. And to get the, a grant of this, at this level
Yes.
with that, with that kind of you know, that, that quickly pretty much stunned us. So.
Good for you.
Thank you, Randy. And just to be, so you're aware, there are 700 communities across the United States that did, were awarded this grant. So there's 700 communities like us looking at their own local problems, looking for their own local solutions. And we are lucky enough that Stoughton is in year six of this grant and Wanakee is in year one. So not only can we support and learn from our community, but we can also collaborate with neighboring communities because we know really impacting Dane County, our kids just don't stay in Oregon. They travel throughout Dane County. And our goal is to impact youth, impact parents in a positive way to keep all our kids safe.
Awesome.
Yes.
All right.
So Mike, we don't need any action tonight on any agreements. Those will be coming back to us.
That's, that's correct. Yep.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, ladies, for being here tonight with such good news. You can come back anytime when you have good news.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Continuing public appearances, item 9B. This is the Thiel's request for raise order for 215 South Main Street property and possible board reaction direction. We have a couple items here. The first is discuss with village attorney regarding chapter 14, sections 14.15, unsafe buildings and 14.45, raising old and damaged buildings of the Oregon municipal code. And we have some emails in our packet. And then we have a discussion with Jerry and Bonnie Thiel. Matt, do you want to go first here?
I'd be happy to do that. Thank you. After the last meeting, we did take a deeper look at the regulatory framework that could apply to this circumstance. Prior to the meeting, our focus was on the state statute that governs the procedure for raising buildings. We discovered in the village code it, two sections that may come into play here. I think the one that really caught my attention is section 14.45. That section says, I'll just read the, what I think is the relevant portion. It says, any existing framed building within the fire district, which may hereafter be damaged by fire or which has deteriorated to an amount of over one-half of its fair market value, exclusive of the foundation, shall not be repaired or rebuilt, but shall be ordered removed by the building inspector under the provisions of section 66.05 of the Wisconsin statutes. So this is an unusual ordinance. I'd not seen another code that has this provision. And it, it, it requires essentially that the building inspector issue a raise order when, as a result of either fire or other circumstances, the cost of repairing a, a building would exceed one-half of its fair market value. And so here we have a request by, by a property owner who believes that the cost of repair of their building would in fact exceed half of the value of the building. They've requested the issuance of a raise order. And under this statute, it appears that that's what our building inspector needs to do. We, we need to, I think, follow the statute, the ordinance that we have today. I think on a going forward basis, I would suggest the board may want to reconsider whether it wants to keep this ordinance on the books. For example, there could be a circumstances in which someone has a damage to a building and wants to repair it. On, under this ordinance, the building inspector wouldn't have the authority to allow that, would in fact not be, would, would be required to order that it, that it be repaired, could not even issue a permit allowing a repair of the building if the owner wanted to repair it. So I don't think we want to keep this ordinance on the books long-term, in my view, but it is here today. The other statute, 14.15, is, in my view, was an attempt to mirror the statutory framework. But it's, it's different from the statute in that this, this ordinance says that the building inspector shall order the owner to raise a, a building under certain circumstances. The statute doesn't say shall, it says may, and it gives the building inspector discretion. And so again, I think we, we may want to revisit this language as well and update it and consider whether it should be modified so that it's not mandatory, because I can certainly see circumstances in which someone would want to repair a building. And the way our code is drafted, that's not even apparently an option. So that's one of the reasons we thought we, we, we needed to bring this back to update the board on, you know, what we found in the code. I think going forward, my recommendation is that we you know, bring these code provisions to the attention of our building inspector and have the inspector determine whether the cost of repair would exceed half the value of the property in a way that the inspector deems to be reasonable. That could involve relying on information that the property already, already has available. They've already had, I think, an inspection done and they've got information available on that. That may be enough, or it may be that the inspector will say, hey, I've got, I've got to dig into this a little deeper before issuing an order. But I think that's the appropriate next step is to have the building inspector do that. And if the building inspector concludes that the cost of repair would exceed the threshold here in our ordinance, then issue the appropriate order. So that's where we are. I, I wish we had had the, had identified these ordinances prior to the last meeting, but we hadn't. So better late than never, I guess, on this one.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Matt. Um, questions for Matt before, I see Bonnie's here. Doesn't look like any further questions for Matt. So Bonnie, did, did you have remarks or things you wanted to add?
Um, I guess, yeah, Matt really outlined it very well. And, and we do, you know, I, I've maintained from the beginning in, in our discussions that. This should be a function of building inspection and it appears that, that yes, it is. You know, I understand there was sentiment about, you know, certain people not getting involved and, and not wanting think that the village should be involved and. And I guess I, I, about the village board, I guess I should say, not be involved and, and to an extent. I, I agree with that. There is apparently. A code and a process, even though it's been unusual, or maybe. It hasn't happened often. And I know when speaking with Jeff, it hasn't happened often that a raise order has been issued, but. You know, here it is, and apparently there's a provision for making it happen. Our intent is, is, you know, to, to just move on with, with. Getting our property. And the land, the, the building in a state where it. Where it needs to be. And you know, it's unfortunate that it happened. It was a terrible loss. It was a loss for us. And it's, you know, there's no power there. There's no water there. It's definitely unfit for human habitation. I'm sure there's many critters, you know, living in there right now, but we don't want it to, to stay like that. At any length of time. We just like to abide by the ordinances that are in place and. We're happy to, we already actually have forwarded our report from our insurance adjuster, all forty-seven pages of it. To Jeff. Happy to share that and happy to have that used as a tool to, to go forward with this. But I also understand at the same time, if the building inspector would like to do their own, happy to do that as well. Just have to do it in the daylight because there's, there's no power in that building right now. So, um, you know, I think all the criteria has been met according to the ordinances in place and hopefully we can just, like I say, move forward.
Okay, yes, thank you. Oh, go ahead, Jeff.
To echo kind of what Bonnie was saying there, and, and I have actually spoken with our building inspector who, he approached me. Late last week, and I just told him that we were bringing this before the village board. And I let him know that we had received the report from Jerry and Bonnie. And that was very thorough. And that's, that was one of the other things that I know we were kind of. A little in the dark on is, you know, when someone says we've had a report, you just never know how thorough and how detailed it is and, and how much. You can rely on it and until you really get a chance to take a look at it. And I did look through it. It's very, very detailed. And so I'm not, I'm not concerned at all with. Our building inspection service being able to use that. And of course, they will be the final authority. When I did talk to Tony, whether it be Tony or someone else from the company, definitely they'll still do an onsite visit, which. And Bonnie would, you know, agree was, you know, just a good idea is to walk through it. And like you said, during the daylight, but. I don't see, foresee any significant problems at all. And, and, and I don't know, Matt, from us issuing a raise order, we're not. Are we certifying an amount of loss on that? Or how does that, how does that work? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I mean, the building inspector is going to have to make a determination about the. Estimated cost to, to repair and determine whether that cost exceeds fifty percent of the value. Yep.
So, so they'll obviously have to do that and, and take the time to do that, whether they'll use hundred percent of what we've been given as far as the report. I'll, I'll leave that up to them. That's not in my. Expertise at all. And so, but, but yeah, I have no problem working with Tony to have that done. And, and like Bonnie said, I mean, I, the only experience I think that any staff has with any raise orders have been. Really. Un, unwilling nuisance. People with a nuisance that have been unwilling to make the, the changes. You know, we here, here, here we have Jerry and Bonnie. They want to repair it, or they want to. Come back and rebuild and everything like that. They're, they're asking for it. A lot of times. Entities may have a derelict building that just is really a danger and we almost have to kind of go through. Issuing a raise order, which would be forcing them to move ahead with something. Correct, Matt?
That's, uh, that's the only circumstance I've ever been involved in where you have a, a property owner who has failed to take the necessary steps on a voluntary basis and you're. Kind of forced to issue a raise order. And so it's a highly, you know, it's usually a very. Not something you want to do. And, and so this is the first time I've ever been involved in a situation where a property owner requested it. I do, I do understand why it's being requested, I think. And again, our ordinance is drafted such that. You know, our building inspector, I think, needs, needs to proceed here. And again, I, I do think we should. Revisit these ordinances and perhaps update them because there definitely could be circumstances where we wouldn't want it to be. Forced to issue a raise order here. You could, for example, have a property owner who wants to repair a building. And if we apply our ordinance as written, the building inspector. Could theoretically be in a position of having to say, no, I'm not, I can't let you do that. I have to order you to raise it, even though you don't want to. So we've got to fix the ordinance.
Matt, is this something where, I mean, where maybe we should just take the village wording out of it and rely more on the state statute, which is obviously reviewed. If I remember right, the vintage of the ordinance, chapter fourteen is eighty-two, is that right?
Yeah, I would repeal, I would repeal what we have in the ordinances entirely and just rely on the statute. Yes.
Yeah, that's, because that's something that's obviously looked at more than once every thirty-eight years.
Yeah, these are some old ordinances that, you know. Need to be, need to be, they should be repealed, in my view. And, and we can, we, you know, we can get to that at a later date, but they are what they are today. And so today, I think we need to follow.
And, and even if they were repealed, we would still probably be going through about the same process, Matt?
Well, if they were repealed, then we'd be in the same position we were in at the last meeting, which is, we have a statute that says. The village board or the building inspector may. Issue an order, and so it would not be mandatory, it would be discretionary, and then we'd be having to try to decide whether to issue the order or not, and. We wouldn't be in a position where we have to. I mean, this ordinance says, building inspector shall.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Alright, board, board members, yes, Amanda, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just, so, so to proceed from here, we're looking at. Having our building inspector inspect the property. Either, you know, and, and either looking at the report that was already done or writing up their own, but. If they concur, then they come back to us and they say, yes, we agree with this. And we say, okay, here's your raise order, or.
Well, it doesn't even have to come back to the village board. The building inspector. Would review the report, conduct whatever inspection the building inspector deems necessary. And if the building inspector determines that the cost of repair exceeds, you know, fifty percent of the value. The building inspector could then simply issue the order. Now, the inspector may or may not ask for a little help from me on it, making sure it's in proper form. But it does not need to come back to the village board. It's issued by the building inspector.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. I, I say we proceed by our ordinances and then we can revise them soon.
Any other questions from board members? Do you, do you need action from us on this, Mike?
Maybe, maybe just a motion to direct the village attorney to prepare the orders to repeal these two sections out of. Remove these two sections out of chapter fourteen.
Is that what you're looking for, Matt, to?
Um, if, yeah, if the board would, would like to have such an ordinance prepared, please do give me that direction.
Okay, Amanda, are you making a motion or do you have a question?
Sure, I, I mean, I, I don't know if we need to make a new one, but I, I. I'm open to amendments here, but I, I'll make a motion that we repeal those two sections of the. The highlighted sections in the packet of, of regarding raising buildings. And. Go with the state statutes on the matter.
Corey.
Yes.
That's a motion to repeal. Aren't you running a motion to direct the attorney to prepare the, the. The resolution that would remove that.
Same. The, the motion, I mean, Matt knows he has to prepare the orders by doing the repeal.
I'll interpret the motion as a direction to prepare the necessary ordinance.
Yep.
Exactly.
Yep.
That'll have to come back before the board for.
Mm-hmm, yep, yep, yep.
Alright, any further discussion on this item? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Alright, so, so Jeff, you'll. I don't know, do whatever work you need to do with the building inspector to make sure that they have everything they need.
I will be touching base with Tony and let him know, Bonnie, and we'll, we'll be in touch.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, thanks for being here tonight, Bonnie. We appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you.
Alright. Item ten is approval of minutes. We have none. Item eleven is approval of vouchers. Tonight we have vouchers. In the amount of six hundred fifty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Would someone like to make a motion to get this on the table, please? By Glish, second by Jenna, by Jacobson. Alright, what questions do we have for staff on vouchers? Perhaps none this week. That would be exciting. Oh, Jerry's got a question. There you go, Jerry.
Just trying to give somebody else a first shot at it, so. This is probably going to be for Jeff. It's Bobcat of Madison. Replace sides of the bobcap. Whether, was there an accident of some sort?
No, so what that was is we. We have a annual lease that we do with Bobcat of Madison. It's a very good deal for us. And it's a couple thousand dollars a year that they allow us to lease the equipment. And as I understand it, these, these, this is just their way of freshening up the leased piece of equipment that we have that. That they put the new sides on it. On the side when we turn it back in.
I was just wondering if there was an insurance claim of some sort.
No, no insurance claim, just standard wear and tear on these, on these pieces of equipment.
And then, uh, Urfer's Body Shop. For a repair roof. It's number twenty-five forty.
Yeah, Lisa, is that? Is that the? I thought that happened a long time ago. Are you on, or do you have that one handy, Lisa?
Um, let me go grab it. I forgot to grab.
You know, you can always report this next time, too.
Yeah, I mean, my only recollection on that, when we had, we, the only roof damage that I can remember is when we had a tree off of the library site go through one of a shed roof, but that was not.
I don't, I don't think she's done anything other than mystery side so far. I, yeah, I need to study.
Hey Coral, could you mute yourself?
I apologize, y'all. Like my birthday event, y'all.
You mute Coral? Thank you. Okay, continue, please.
So twenty-six forty, Urfer. Lisa?
It's, it just says repair roof panel and spot paint. So it must have been something on, it looks like roof.
Okay, so that would have been on a vehicle.
On the, on the leaf fact, it says.
Okay. You must have had to repair the roof of the leaf fact. I'm not aware of that one, Jerry. I'm sorry.
Well, again, my question is going to be, is there something that should be?
I'll ask.
Make a claim with our insurance company?
Well, I think our deductible is probably higher than this repair.
Yeah, the same now for that amount, Jerry.
Oh, man. And my final question is. Little bucket truck.
Yep.
Was there an accident of some sort, or is that just a?
That's that little truck with the flames on it. And that's, that's kind of our little workhorse. Every year we have to sink some money into it, but it's still keeps on ticking and.
It's just regular maintenance, then, right, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, not an insurance claim or anything like that.
Okay. I'm done.
Alright, thank you. Corey, go ahead.
Um, I guess, one, I guess before I get to my question, the Urfer's Body Shop, I know a lot of times the brush trucks with the brush. Getting blown into the trucks get worn out from having the chips hit the wall. So it might be that for repairing the, the brush truck, but I'm just guessing there. My question was, is why do we have so many Dorn hardwares that are showing up that have zeros in them? Twenty-three fifty.
Good question.
Um, I don't know.
Do you want to have more?
May, maybe he, maybe when, because we import that, maybe when we imported, we didn't have the dollar amounts in. And then we re-imported it with the dollar amounts, would be my guess.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing something.
I don't think so.
No, the amount there is about what it is on a busy month.
That was it.
Okay.
Other questions? Alright, roll call vote, please.
Jacobson? Jacobson? Sorry.
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Stitch? Luke Stitch?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes. Alright, thank you very much. Alright, on to proclamations and announcements, board comments. Do we have board comments tonight? Yes, Amanda?
Hi, I'll be really quick. I just wanted to give a, a shout out to OCA Media. Paul Zwicker, who I know is on the call here. These guys over COVID are just knocking it out of the park. They have really pivoted in this COVID time. I mean, I'm on the OCA Media Board and. You know, I'm, I, we just had a meeting and we got some updates and comparable peg stations. Like Kenosha, Sun Prairie, Fitchburg and Monona, like put together, have had a hundred and twenty-four engagements on Facebook in December. OCA Media by itself had three hundred twenty-four. YouTube videos, subscribers are up. They've made a hundred and fifty-seven videos last, in this past year. That's like every other day, they're putting out new stuff. I just don't see this from anything else. I just think they're doing a tremendous job and. I really feel like they just needed some, some kudos there, so that was it.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other board comments at this time? Alright, staff comments? Mike, I'll kind of let you run down through the coming meetings.
Yep, so I was gonna take a few minutes here to go through these meetings. So this Thursday, eight, eight AM, we have the special personnel meeting. And then at night, we have the joint meeting with the planning commission to look at the presentation of the Westside Parks concept plan. Then our next meet, next board meeting is January eighteenth. And then the first meeting in February is the first, no meeting at this point on February eighth. And then the, what would be the second meeting in February, that's when we're going to be meeting, the board's going to be meeting with Kevin and Chris to go through the. The semifinalists mini resumes. And since that's going to be almost an hour and a half. Me, meaning longer than an hour and a half, hour and a half long, I decided just to maybe just keep. m- meaning longer than an hour and a half, uh, hour and a half long, um, I decided just to maybe just keep it just for that, uh, item. Um, there could be a couple of items I had, but we're trying to stay focused that night on, uh, looking at the, the resumes. And then, so then the second board meeting in February would be the twenty-second. Now, now that's going to be a joint meeting with the library. And then March first, the board will have a, a long meeting to watch the videos. And so, uh, what I did was I, I made the first regular meeting of the board in March is March eighth. And then that week of March eighth is when, at this point, the finalists are scheduled to come to, uh, the village for interviews with the, with the village board. And then, and then the second meeting in March would be March fifteenth. So I know it's a lot, a lot on your calendar, but I thought I, uh, give you a heads up on what's, uh, coming up the next couple of months.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Any questions on those board members? All right. Item thirteen, communication and miscellaneous business. Uh, item A is a status of village administrator search.
The announcement up, announcement went on Friday and it's up on our webpage and the, uh, the videos as well. And Jeannie did a great job. I watched it. And I was kidding. I said, I may even apply for the job after watching it. Now you did a wonderful job at it.
Wow. Hey, thanks.
Yeah. So we'll see hopefully. Um, I will tell you, um, I've been sort of tracking this. We do have some competition for other jobs, but we're really the only, I remember correctly, we're really the only administrator job that's in a, I'd, I say in metropolitan area. Everything else right now is, is more rural, so we'll, we'll see who, who applies for our job compared to other jobs.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Any questions on that, board members? All right. Item B, we have a discussion and possible action regarding JCPark, um, regarding the survey and additional services. We were recommended motion to approve the complete proposal from Rupert Milky dated September fourth, twenty twenty, in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars for engineering services associated with JCPark West. And funding is coming from previous borrowing. Would someone like to make that motion? Motion by Peterson, second by Jacobson. Thank you. All right. Questions on this? Yes, Corey? Corey, we can't hear you.
I have two keyboards going on here and I guess I'm hitting the wrong one. Um, with the contract, one thing that I noticed is it talks about, um, having the work, um, performed within twenty-one days. And the work includes a wetland delineation, which I don't think can get done in that amount of time. Um,
So, okay, yeah, so the wetland delineation's actually already been completed. Um, I, if you remember, we, we brought this back before the board, hmm, a couple of months ago to get approval for just the wetland delineation. They did that. We really should have had this included with the Rettler design contract, which was approved at the last meeting, but we did not have it in there. Um, I, I, I didn't get that on there. And so this is, this is just dotting an I and crossing a T to approve this, um, to be the work included with the JCPark work that Rettler is doing. Uh, but yeah, the, the wetland delineation's already been done. Um, and then this would just be mostly wrapping up the survey and the flood plan work.
Okay. So it, it's after the fact work, which is, is fine, I guess. And we kind of knew that was happening. One other, in the contract, it excludes wetland locating and the proposal is for a wetland delineation. So I don't know if we want to strike that from the contract because that is part of the scope of work.
Right. Well, we'll be getting a, a, we'll be getting the task order. I'll make sure, I mean, this is just the proposal from them and we'll be giving you a final task order. So yeah, I'll, I'll mention that.
Okay. That's it.
Okay.
Any other questions on this? All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item C is discussion and possible action regarding resolution twenty-one dash oh four, the Village of Oregon, twenty twenty-one fee schedule. Uh, recommended motion is to adopt resolution twenty-one oh four. Someone to make that motion? Motion by Horton, I think you, second. By Jacobson, thank you. Any questions on those couple of items from anyone? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item D, discussion and possible action regarding review of ordinance twenty dash oh five, uh, recreating the park board in consideration of park board appointments. Um, and the first park board meeting is scheduled for March third at five PM. Um, so just to, this has been a while since we did this, uh, just to kind of keep everybody up to, uh, speed. We changed the ordinance, um, and changed it so that all park board members needed to be village residents. Um, if you remember previously, they didn't have to be village residents and there were certain, there were certain slots, um, saved for certain community organizations. Rotary had one. Uh, the Chamber had one, the JC's had one, the JC's haven't existed in like twenty years. Um, and so it was problematic to find people to fill all of these super silos. Um, so we rewrote the ordinance basically saying you just have to be a village resident and show an interest in the position. And so the, um, the appointment or the, the, um, the applications were open for several months and we got a lot of people to apply. So I want to let you know, um, it was, uh, it was really, really cool. I, I interviewed all these folks over the phone, obviously with COVID, um, but so this is my, um, recommendation to you. And the reason that there are different year terms is because this is a brand new board, so we have to stagger folks. Um, and, uh, really the only reason that the one-year terms went to the student member is because that person's a student and, um, students come and go. And the only reason that Mark Miller is a one-year term is because, um, he's been on the park board for a long time. I talked him into coming back and this gives him an easy exit if he wants to, to exit. Otherwise, I'm sure we'd be happy to reappoint Mark, uh, to the park board and he was also the previous chair. Um, so, but otherwise the two and three-year terms are, are pretty random. So just wanted to let you know there wasn't any big, uh, covert operation there. So I'll read these. So, um, recommended motion is to approve appointments to the park board for these terms. Uh, village aboard appointee would be Corey Horton, student member appointee Miller Stang, member Phil Van Kampen, uh, member Dave Jamison, member Jamie Fresh, member Jerome Klein, and member Mark Miller for the terms outlined. So I'll go ahead and, and make that motion. Would someone like to second it? Second by Glish. Thank you. Any questions from board members? Yes, Corey?
Um, well, I have a little.
I'd say that you can't, don't want to be on it.
Well, unfortunately, I think I ha- I have to say that I, uh, I probably can't be on it. Um, I've put in an offer on a house and it's not within the village and I'm likely, um, I will likely close even before March third meeting. So I think it would be logical to have a different village board appointee for the park board.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, um, how, uh, Mike, is it okay if we appoint him now and just change that? The next village president could just change that. Because the, the village, so Corey, how this works is the village president appoints the village board member and that's going to happen again at the second and second week of April. Um, unless, Mike, you want a different village board member at that third meeting.
So Corey, are you saying that you're, you're, you're moving out of the village?
Yes.
Well, that's, i- is Matt still on the, on the call?
Yeah, I'm here, Mike.
So Matt, if, if, and I mean, I don't mean to put Corey on the spot here, but if, if Corey's moving out of the village, then and so your legal actions are going to be outside the village, you, you're not a village board member anymore.
Once he's no longer a village resident, he no longer meets the qualifications to, to be a trustee.
Yeah.
When are you moving, Corey?
I don't have a set date yet. Um, and this has all happened since Friday, which is why I don't have a lot of details on it and I haven't told anybody. So, um, I don't have.
The entire world knows now.
Yeah. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Sorry.
That's, no, it's totally fine. And, um, so I do expect that it will be before February that I will close on my house on, in Oregon. And I fully understand that I wouldn't be eligible to be, uh, on the village board at that point.
Okay. So, I mean, I, I think we could ask somebody, somebody else wants to be a, the, on the park board or Jeannie, or you could just leave that spot vacant until April. It, it, I mean, it'd be, when you think about it, we meet in March, it, it will be two meetings before the, the new, the new board takes, takes place. So it, it doesn't really matter that much.
I guess I'm, my inclination is just to leave that bank it then.
Yeah.
Let the next president take.
I, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So, um, so I guess I'll make it a friendly amendment to my motion, uh, to, to approve all of the, um, folks to that, uh, except for the village board appointee, which we will leave open until, uh, April sometime. Okay, Jenna, is that okay with you? Did you second it? Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any, uh, questions? Yes, Amanda, go for it.
Uh, yeah. So, um, first I have a, a question. Um, is three-year terms, is that a, a typical thing? I, I, I mean, do other committees that we have have terms that long?
Actually, most of them have longer terms.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I, I couldn't remember. I thought they were mostly one and two-year terms, so that just struck me as odd, but if that's typical.
Then, then as village president, I could get rid of problem people, but I think that's probably why they're longer, Amanda. So that the village president can't get rid of problem people.
Possibly. I don't know. I, I just was wondering about that, but, uh, that's good to know. Um, so the only other thing that I noticed about the candidates, uh, and, and I'm not, um, taking issue with any of the appointees. I'm sure they're all qualified and, and everything, but, uh, i- it's, uh, six men and one woman. And I think they're all white. Uh, and I just didn't know if, if, um, I guess I just wanted to say that, that I think that as a board and a community that, that we could, we need to do better maybe at recruiting and encouraging candidates that better reflect the diversity in our community. That was my statement.
Yes. Yeah. Point very well taken. Thank you, Amanda.
I, I, I will say in defense of the board, Amanda, not that you're, not that it needs to be defense, this, this was open for a long time. We advertised it, but we even had it, I think, on top of the agenda. So, I mean, we.
It was open for ten months.
Yeah, I mean, it was, we, I, you know, we tried to get the word out, um.
And I, I did, by the way, uh, uh, not a lot, but a significant amount of these people on this list are there because I recruited them.
Yeah, and I tried to do some recruiting too. I mean, I, you know, but, uh, that said, um.
And this is a, and this is a good board, Amanda. We were talking about this. This is a good board if you want to get interested in the village to start on, you know.
Right. Exactly. Yeah, I knew it was open. I've tried to talk to people, but I mean, we're, we're, so this is maybe something that a, a future diversity and equity and inclusion committee could feed, give us feedback on is how do we make, how do we reach the people that we need to reach? So all these new voices can be part of the discussion. So.
How do you make them feel comfortable that, to be on a, on a village committee?
Exactly, exactly. So that, that's my statement. I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to fight this. I, I, uh, these are all qualified people. I know most of them on the list, but, um, just we, I think as a board, we need to keep an eye on that going forward, that we were recruiting in the right places and, and that kind of thing. So.
I will say, Amanda, that when I interviewed people, I did not ask their race or their gender.
Of course not. No.
Cause that's really awkward and.
Yeah. Of course.
So, yeah, just wanted to let you know. I, yeah.
Sure, sure. I, you know, i- it's an observation and, uh, I, I just want us going forward to, to do better. That was all.
Gotcha.
Not trying to slam anybody. Just just trying to.
Other, other comments on this? All right. Otherwise, well, I'm sorry, someone.
Sorry. Just for clarification, um, on the amended um, motion.
Mm-hmm.
Thought I heard Jenna make the amendment, but it was actually Randy that made the second.
Yeah, so it's, it's okay with me.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Yes. So, yes.
Just clarifying.
Sorry.
Jenny agreed with it. Jenny, Jenny agrees with the two, right? Yeah.
Thank you, Peggy. So Glish says he agrees with the amendment. All right. Thank you. Thanks for keeping us honest here. Appreciate that. All right. So all those in favor of, uh, the motion, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Welcome to the park board team. Exciting news. We're building new parks. So gonna have stuff to do.
Absolutely.
All right. Uh, item E, uh, we have the police department drug takeback day results. Um, Chief, did you want to say anything about this?
Yes. So what's, uh, really interesting about this is the Department of Justice keeps close track of the weight, uh, per county, per state. Um, and what they found was, first time ever, uh, it's, it's typically Texas and California that lead in, uh, drug takeback. But actually this year, or this last year, twenty twenty, it was Wisconsin. Um, we participate in this, um, endeavor in two different ways. We have a, uh, drug box that sits in our lobby that's minus the pandemic typically available to the public. Uh, we are doing it that, uh, by appointment still now. But people are welcome to drop off their meds, um, and they get deposited into this locked box. And in addition to that box being available to the public, we also do twice a year a takeback day. And that's really only four hours. Um, we team up with Oregon Care's while we're running our event and taking, uh, medications in. Uh, during that four hours, Oregon Care's is there giving out all kinds of free resources, um, and then lock boxes and things like that. Um, so, you know, in my email here to Mike, on our last takeback day, we, and this is during a pandemic, we still collected two hundred pounds of medications in the Village of Oregon and thirty pounds of syringes, which were disposed of, um, in, in October twenty-sixth. So this would be the medication that, um, we normally take in through the drop box in the lobby, uh, we took in twenty-five boxes total with four hundred and eighty-five point two pounds. So Oregon is certainly doing their part to help Wisconsin be number one, and I just want to make sure that was recognized.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Any questions from board members on that item? All right. And then, uh, item F, uh, the police department's use of force policy certified.
Go ahead. So not too long ago, I brought forward to you, um, a policy revision and really it was, uh, revising the chokeholds and when they can be used, which, uh, would only apply to deadly force. Um, and I presented that to you. You approved the, the change in policy. I did submit our new revised policy to, uh, WILYAG. WILYAG is again, um, the accreditation board that oversees, um, our accreditation status. Um, not only is the chokehold component, uh, one part of this, but then also that all of our, uh, use of force policy meet uh, state and federal, uh, laws and guidelines. And because we're already accredited and have gone through the full accreditation, um, our policies are up to par. Literally all I had to do is add in the, the specific chokehold, uh, verbiage. Um, we didn't have it in there before because we're not, that's not Wisconsin. Wisconsin doesn't train that way. But regardless, it's in there now. Um, in front of you is, um, the letter from WILYAG advising that they have reviewed our newly revised policy and have, um, approved it. So we are within the, we are in compliance with the presidential executive order on safe policing for safe communities.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Questions on that item, Chief? All right. Thank you for the information, Jenny. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. Item G, uh, reminder of weekly recycling collection by Palatieri. Additional recycling collection information in Palatieri's notice. So that's exciting. Get to put the big blue bucket out every week now. Who? Uh, item.
Back on that.
Positive feedback, right?
Yeah, a lot. Very, I've seen very lot, lots of positive reactions from anyone I've told or seen on social media or anything like that. There's been, um, I think especially coming around Christmas where you've got a lot of paper and boxes and other things like that. So this is a good thing.
Yeah. So those of you running for reelection should campaign that you brought about the change to weekly recycling. It's a sure vote. Just saying. On my street, it would be. I got lots of kudos from the people. Just saying, on my street it would be. I got lots of kudos from the people on my street. Yeah. Item H, Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources approved the wastewater treatment plans facility plan. That's huge news. That's a really short statement, but that's, that's really exciting, Jeff.
Yeah, it's, it's great news. And yeah, lots of credit to Town Country Engineering. Ben and Cassie and oh, I knew I was going to do this. All of them at Town and Country has their, there's someone at home going, I worked on it too. But no, they did a great job and just the approval through DNR is kind of the final step of that. And now you'll be seeing next week, I'll bring, bringing kind of our next step now that we kind of get into, we get beyond the study and now we get into the meat and bones, meats and yeah, meat and bones of it.
Excellent. Questions for Jeff on that?
Can you?
Oh yeah, go ahead, Randy.
Jeff, how many times did this come before us? I'm just curious. Like 10?
No, I think, I think there were probably four times where it was a formal presentation. And then, I mean, we've kept you apprised of kind of the, praised, apprised of the progress of it. So.
I'm just making a joke.
Heard it a lot, but yes.
Yeah, but each of those four times was like an hour. So really it's like eight times.
Yeah. But wastewater is so exciting.
I mean, yeah, you want to know how to get people to vote for you, you know, don't take care of their wastewater and they'll vote you out. So it's super important.
No, it is, it is good. It's, this is a really good step for our wastewater treatment plant. And, and honestly, as, as we look towards the future and and just, it always feels good when you have a very good assessment on where you are and where you're going.
Amen. All right. Item I, this is a discussion and possible action regarding resolution 21-05, declaring a continuing state of emergency in the Village of Oregon and delegating certain powers during the state of emergency. So we recommend motion to approve resolution 21-05. Someone like to make that motion? By Stitch, thank you. And second by Glash. Any questions on this?
Jeannie?
Yeah.
Just, you know, I, I made this, this is like, I think third time we've done this, maybe fourth. I made it, I made this in on May 3rd. I figure the new administrator and the new board will be in place. They can decide if they want to continue at that point.
Yeah, sounds, sounds like a plan.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item J, discussion and possible action and direction regarding the 2021 park reservations. I see we have an email from Deb with probably a good question on that.
Yeah. And, and we received the order number 12, which goes into effect tomorrow. And I don't know if, if Elise can bring that up or not. Thank you. And so even though the outdoor gatherings are going to be up to 50 people versus 25, everything else is basically in place. I, I talked to the staff today and what we think we should do is rather than taking reservations for anything at this point, we should go back to what we were doing last year and just wait to see what the next order is. This, this isn't affect till for 28 days. So in the middle of February, because right, right now, let's say this was, this, this was spring or summer, you, you technically could not play competitive baseball at this point or soccer or lacrosse. And, and so I don't think we should be taking reservations for that and potentially let people violate the order. And and so, so then the question is, you know, now that you could do 50 people outside, the, the concern with that is we take reservations and then we, we go backwards and we have to cancel them again. So we're just thinking at this point, don't take reservations. I will, I'll communicate that to Deb. And I'll bring this back in the middle of February when this order expires. If that makes sense to the board.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I don't know if others feel differently.
Wish, I wish this was easier, but I think it's, I think it was confusing to be taking reservations and then Deb's got to cancel them. It just, you know, I just think we got to wait. I know, I know it's tricky because people are trying to do their tournaments this summer, but who, who knows that they're going to be allowed in Dane County this summer, the way it's going. I'm not sure. When you, when you get a chance to read, the, the order will be out in the, in the news tomorrow. It, you know, our, we're trending, we're trending the wrong way. And that's why they're concerned about, obviously, the whole country is at this point. So so that's, so that's my, my opinion. I don't know if the board agrees with that or not. I'm happy to take a motion on that. If you want to just, if you want to also start to take reservations, that's up to you. But I, I think our, our thought is just to hold it until the next order comes out.
Does that sound all right with everyone? Yeah, Amanda, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to agree. I think that's a good idea. I'm, I'm 100% on board with that.
Okay.
I see a lot of nodding heads, Mike. So you don't need to, for that, do you?
No, I'm fine. Thank, thank you.
Okay. All right, item K, COVID-19 update. This is an update regarding the Roots to Recovery Program. The village received an additional $17,547.77 to the program for a new grand total of $182,886.77. So that's exceptional news.
I was gonna say, I've said this before and I'll say it again. Candy's amazing. She, she is the main reason we, as we, you know, have received all this money. She, she put in the, the original 165,000. She said, you know, let's, let's see what happens. Let's put some additional expenses in and they granted the additional money. So, so it's all candy. That's, that's why we're getting the extra money.
Very, very good.
Yep.
And then item two is a message to village property taxpayers with the 2020 tax collection. Tax bills have been mailed and the village is encouraging everyone to pay their taxes via mail or electronic means. So we have, there's some options listed here on the agenda. There will be option five in-person collection dates and hours is on Friday, January 29th from 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM. If you absolutely think that you have to do it in person, you, do you want folks to make a reservation or appointment? Or just to walk in?
No, no reservations are required. When we had it the end of December, it was, you know, a steady stream of people, but nothing overwhelming. And they just would come in and we had two stations set up and it went really well, actually. So.
Okay, that sounds good. All right. Any questions on any of those? All right, report of committees, we have none. We have no minutes, not requiring action. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We have some future agenda items and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Boggle move adjournment.
Is there a second? Second by Jacobson. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned. Appreciate your time.
Everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.